Next up is Tom Truitt. And I'm also not going to talk about people's email addresses, just so you know. Tennis nut.
Good boy. Hello, Counselor. I wish to say a lot of things without reiterating what's already been said. My family has lived in the house that I currently own on Park Avenue for literally centuries. I'm the third generation owner of the home, as a matter of fact. And I could not agree more with what's already been stated by my neighbors and my friends. We have a lot of concerns about what we see going on. And I think it's important that everyone abide by the guidelines put forward. When our area was originally established as an historic district, it's always been a safe neighborhood with a strong sense of community and appreciation for the history involved in all the old homes. I'm hoping we can take measures that will ensure that those values are preserved for many more years. And I don't really have anything else to add. Like I said, I don't want to be redundant, but please give this the attention that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Susan Rawl.
My name's Susan Rawl, and I also live in Newtown with my husband and Doug Bailey, as well as my neighbors here surrounding us. Last, let's see, it's almost been nine years since we moved from the western shore here to Salisbury. And why did we move here? Well, we wanted a slower pace. I was just recovering from breast cancer and realized that the stress of living in the DC area was just too much. We also, I myself, love the beach. And both my husband and I loved and always dreamed of owning a historic home. We could not afford those historic homes in Annapolis or Georgetown in DC, but we could afford a historic home here. We fought for that home. We work on that home. And we laugh in that home. But what we also wanted to see were other neighbors that had the same desire that we do, to have a single-family homes as those two homes we mentioned at 405 and 400 North Division are and have been designated as single-family homes. So we enjoy our neighborhood. We enjoy the family atmosphere, but we do not like what we see right now. Cars coming and going, over occupancy of homes that only have, particularly in 405, have one and a half baths, but they serve about 10 people living in the home. One morning, my husband was awakened and saw me coming out of the home with a jar. And the jar was yellow. He took that liquid, that yellow liquid, and poured it down the sewer drain. One can only imagine what was in that yellow, what was the yellow liquid in the jar. My guess is there wasn't enough bathrooms in that home, so he peed in the jar and dumped it in the sewer. That's an issue. That's a hygiene and safety issue right there. So please, I ask, the City Council and other residents of Salisbury, please support us and please keep us in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Brandon Records. Next up is Kay Gibson.
As you all know, I'm very concerned about the need to increase our taxes. And I understand a lot of decisions were made by administrations before this, and you're kind of left to pick up the pieces. So let's not make more bad choices, more choices that expect the people living in the remainder of Salisbury to pick up, like when somebody decides to build and they're not paying none of the cost of hooking up the sewer, the water, and the other amenities, when they're given 20 years of reduced or no property tax but have to be serviced, which means the rest of the city has to pay for it. And quite frankly, they may, the developers may be making money off their property, but I'm sure not. The Ross building was excused because it was going to expand the living capacity for people moving into Salisbury. It happens to be apartments, some of them with four bedrooms, and each bedroom being rented separately. There's going to be a huge map parking. I understand they've been allowed to park. That it's going to be leased from the current parking building, which is fine, but it reduces the number of parking slots for other people. So now I read an article in The Independence about other residents being built or other properties, hotels being built. I certainly hope that these buildings and these projects are financially feasible on their own. I do not expect you to be giving away free permits, services for the rest of us elderly people to pay, which we don't have. I certainly hope that one of the reasons that you're selling these properties and having properties built is that you're planning on collecting property tax so the rest of us don't have to constantly get increases and pay for financially unfeasible projects. These are either can stand on their own, or quite frankly, the city of Salisbury doesn't need them. Talking about one building, we're supposed to spend $10 million building another parking garage after you've actually given away the lots? You're asking me to pay higher and higher taxes. For what? I'm not getting a cent from these developments. You're talking about a Unity Square for $3.46 million? Why? We have plenty of green space and parks. You already have the Riverwalk. You also have this area that they meet for concerts. Downtown is only a block away from the city park, which there are tennis courts, two playgrounds, and a zoo. Behind that is a dog park. The county just put in, built a new park, Harmon, with plenty of facilities. You're also, across from downtown, Cross 50, is the Boundless Playground. There are playgrounds in the different communities. They all have to be maintained, which is very expensive and costs several million dollars. Now, please, before you make more mistakes and put more financial pressure on people that don't financially benefit in any way from these projects, they should be, stand on their own, and they should be financially feasible, and we should not be building a $10 million parking garage to allow the developers to make monies. Now, that's one thing. The other thing I have to say is probably even less pleasant. I live in Newtown. I maintain my home. I maintain my yard. Both sides of me have houses that are deteriorating, and across the street, they're deteriorating. For over a year, there's been tarps on one person's roof and siding falling off. The other person, the owner, had a fire in September. The house has never been proper, codes have not properly been filed or followed. I was concerned about the place being repaired after it had been condemned. Okay? I have the list of all the things that were wrong with it after the fire that had to be fixed. One of the things that's supposed to happen is that there is supposed to be a plan filed with the city before construction starts. I noticed that the work was starting, so I went downtown and asked to see the plan and filed a Freedom of Information Act. The same day, the code enforcer went out to talk to the lady four months, four and a half months after he had the last meeting with her. Needless to say, there was no plan. Never has been. I went back to report the house was condemned for multiple reasons. Went back to report that someone was living in the house. The owner decided to move back in the house. Went back to the code enforcement and said, "Somebody's living in that house." I was reassured the following Monday they would receive a letter and they would vacate. Never happened. They're still living in the house. So I take my little cell back down to the code enforcement. First thing they said is, "The Freedom of Information Act does not apply to the restoration plan." Yes, it does. It's not top secret. Then I was told that, because I asked then for the certificate of occupancy, I wanted, was going to file a Freedom of Information Act to see the, since the person was living in there and they knew about it for three weeks, obviously, quite obviously, there was an occupancy permit, right? No. Actually, what I got told was, "Well, why don't, the person is homeless," which I guess if you choose to be homeless, you can be, choose to be homeless, "but you're living in a condemned building that is possibly medically dangerous. What happens if the person gets sick? What happens if the owner falls? Because the city knows that they're there. Are you responsible?" What about the codes being applied to one person
Ms. Gibson, if you could wrap up.
And not being applied to others? Now, I've talked to someone from the mayor's office. I've talked to someone from the administrator's office. Nothing is being done. Someone is being allowed to live in a condemned building without following any of the codes. I understand there are five code enforcers. Shouldn't they all be following the written code so that there is consistency between what one person is asked to do and what another person is asked to do? Is there a deep discrimination? What's going on? I, as I said, I live in Newtown. I have two deteriorating houses living next to me, killing my property value. I couldn't sell my house if I gave it away. I can understand why people are very concerned. And yes, it is illegal to have boarding houses in the city of Salisbury. And yes, we live in an area where only one unrelated person can live with us unless there are licensed treatment centers.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next up is Chris Adams.
My name is Chris Adams with Adams Housing. We own the building Catty Corner from here. I just wanted to say a couple of things regarding the Horizons program. And I would like to say that I know that in life, we all experience times of plenty and times of lack. And right now, our country and this city and the society in general is in a time of lack. People don't have excess money. I deal with tenants every day who come to me with their problems, and I listen carefully because they mean something to me. It's not just a business that I'm in. We are in a business of trying to help people, and so we see a lot of different things happen. Everyone standing in this room has been affected by the lack that is currently encompassing our society. So I would like to know, why is this, is this city facilitating unfair financial advantage to one business over another at the expense of the public? I had a tenant call me and say, "Mrs. Adams, why am I subsidizing the Ross?" And I said, "Let me look into it." And from my position, I'm looking at a city that is forcing both the public and existing businesses to pay for developers' fees that give that developer an unfair financial advantage in the business market. As a business owner in this time of lack, I am now facing a 10% additional tax increase resulting in a mere $10,000 to $15,000 additional tax, additional property taxes that I have to pay to the city every year, all so a high-rise could be built in Salisbury while having no impact fees and deferred taxes for the next 20 years. So to make this clear, Adams Housing, my company, my husband's company, who has contributed to this city for 28 years, gets to pay an additional $10,000 to $15,000 per year in property taxes, while the Ross and the other new projects that are coming up get to pay nothing. Furthermore, my downtown tenants, some of them who have lived there for over 20 years, are expected to pay full price for parking in the parking garage, the same parking garage that the tenants at the Ross get a half-price deal. Now, that means my tenants are subsidizing the Ross's tenants. That policy gives political and financial favor to one business over another, interfering in the fair market for housing providers in this city. And while you may think you have provided incentive for more people to move downtown, you have also provided incentive for my tenants to leave. These decisions that you are making are causing higher rents and higher fees, and it's causing hardship to all my tenants, as the cost is going to have to be passed on to them. And, you know, we're going to have to impose additional rents to customers who are already struggling under the weight of lack. So as citizens and leaders, I expect you to figure out a solution that does not increase the lack for some and give prosperity to others. Remove and repeal the Horizons program. It, in effect, creates subsidized advantage for the Ross's owners at this public's expense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Karen Jones.
I am not a public spokesperson, but I will say that I have lived in this city for 65 years. I was born here and have seen a lot of changes. And most currently, I, and I've never been to a city council meeting, but in speaking with a lot of people, and I think my opinion represents a lot of people, there's just a lot of concerns with decisions being made by the city council that we feel does not encompass the majority of the city. I mean, I feel like it's, you know, this little special interest group over here and this one over here. And I feel like we're just being left out in the cold. And I'm going to start with Unity Square. I don't know why in the world they would take the parking lot from the library. And I don't know all the plans. I guess I hear now there's going to be a parking garage, but what I do know is people with handicaps, like I have a bad hip, so, you know, where am I going to park and carry my books from the library, you know, two blocks down the road? You know, that sort of thing. I just don't, and I don't, and like this other lady, I don't understand why Unity Square has to be, you know, in the middle of, you know, the downtown area when it's already congested. The roundabout is horrible. You know, we have a big city park that really could use a facelift and some updates. Plenty of parking, I mean, could be made there. I don't understand why Unity Square couldn't be down there. Isn't that, you know, a place for unity and families and so on and so forth? I just, I don't know who makes these decisions. I just think it's a horrible decision, and everyone I talk to agrees that it's not a good decision. And, you know, and then the bike lanes. I mean, I know this has probably been brought up on a number of occasions, but, you know, Waverly Drive and Carroll Street, I mean, they're just a disaster. When you go to the emerg, I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse here for 30 years. You know, when you go to the emergency room, you used to merge, you know, to go into the emergency entrance, and now, when you come to the light, you don't really know, I didn't even know what to do. Can I turn here? I mean, you know, and then the big bumpers, and I just think that, you know, somebody said, "Oh, well, it's, we have to keep everybody safe, all the bikers." Well, I've never personally seen even one bike in these bike lanes. But I think what you've created here is an obstacle course. And along with other obstacle courses, like I think it's Pinehurst, right through the middle of a residential street that has speed bumps. I've never seen speed bumps anywhere except for in, you know, a parking lot. So I just, you know, I just don't understand, you know, where, who makes these decisions? And of course, there is the money aspect of it. I mean, personally, I think it would be super to have a public pool. We have no pool. The Y's pool is closed. You want family, you know, you want to have family functions, and there's not even a place to swim, except for the Elks. You have to be a member. They're not an inclusive organization, and it's expensive. Now, I don't know, but there's nowhere for these kids to go, no swim teams, no nothing. So I feel like the money could have much better been spent on a public pool than on bike lanes that no one uses. And I just, I don't understand, like, who makes these decisions and where does the taxpayers and the public, where do our opinions come into play with this stuff? And I agree with the other lady as far as this Unity Square. We got the Riverwalk Pavilion over here that's used, what, three times a year, something? You know, I just, I don't know. I just don't, I just don't agree with, with, you know, these decisions. I don't know that anything will be done. And then there's the parking lot that was a flea market behind District Court. So where are you going to park when you go to court? You know, there's limited parking out front there. So, you know, and now you got to back in out here, and that stops the flow of traffic. I'm not sure why they did that. So I don't know. I, you know, I don't know who the city planner is, who makes these decisions. You know, and I know that a lot of people agree with me. And I, you know, I'm not a politician, but I have lived here a long time, and I feel like that the council does not reflect the majority of the Salisbury residents and what they would like to see, you know, see happen in our city. And then the only other thing, and maybe you have nothing to do with this, but I am upset that there is going to, I'm not upset that there's a pride parade, but I am upset that 2:00 in the afternoon, that the pride parade, that kids love parades, so I'm assuming there'll be a lot of kids there, is also going to have drag queen representation. That, to me, is unnecessary. I don't get it. It's not right, and I don't know whose decision that is. So I don't really know what's happening to our city, but it's not good. It's just not good.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is James Littlefield.
My name is James Littlefield. I'm here as a property owner and also as a representative for Adams Housing. A few weeks ago, I addressed the mayor and city council at a budget meeting regarding a proposed significant property tax increase, an increase in water bill bills, and a $300 fire department fee, which curiously wasn't actually going to the fire department. During the meeting, I expressed concerns for the financial well-being of city residents and the negative impact that these cost increases would create. Just as a reminder, we're experiencing one of the most difficult economic crises in recent history. People are unemployed. Foreclosure is a real threat to a lot of people, and they're unable to pay the elevated costs of food, gas, utilities due to increased costs of living. Not only is raising taxes and water bills on residents unconscionable, it's unnecessary. There's a lot of opacity surrounding the city's financial dealings, and citizens are desperate for transparency. During the previous meeting, I, among others, expressed concerns regarding the city's financial competence and its ability to steward tax dollars responsibly. Now, the saga continues with the sale of Downtown Parking Lot 10, a nearly three-acre piece of property assessed at just under $1.7 million that was recently sold to a developer for $75,000. Chapter 2 dot 32 dot 20 of the city charter outlines a very specific procedure for the disposition of real property. A little bit curious, did the city follow this procedure with the sale of Lot 10? And if so, how is it that it was sold at a 95% discount to a developer? Moreover, is the city following this procedure with the disposition of two other downtown parking lots currently listed for sale with an out-of-town commercial real estate broker or any other property holdings for that matter? When asked for justification for tax increases and questioned about the poor financial condition of the city, the city responded by crying poverty and citing post-pandemic operating, elevated post-pandemic operating costs as justification. I have a different theory. The city has a long history of making poor financial decisions and scratching the backs of large developers at the taxpayer's expense. Fire-selling Lot 10 is just the tip of the iceberg. 10 years ago, the city sold the downtown fire station for $85,000, and just a few months ago, it signed a $1.8 million lease for the same building. The city is currently working with developers to build a mixed-use commercial and residential building on the western half of the old library parking lot. That's adjacent to where Unity Square is going in. Ownership and sale price have not been released, information has not been released. On the eastern half of the library parking lot, the city just broke ground on Unity Square, which comes with a hefty price tag and robs downtown of more much-needed parking. And lastly, the city participated in programs that extended waivers of tens of millions of dollars in taxes and development fees to the developers of the Ross. If the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result, then insanity is set in with the city of Salisbury. The city's financial distress due to repeatedly mismanaging funds at the expense of the, the city's financial distress is due to repeatedly mismanaging funds at the expense of the taxpayer. It baffles me how the city can propose such significant tax increases with, with a straight face when it's consistently funneled hard-earned tax dollars to the pockets of large developers. I do not support increasing property taxes. I do not support eliminating parking downtown. I do not support increasing water bills. And I don't support the continued participation in programs that cost taxpayers tens of millions of dollars, such as the Horizon Program. I do not support the city of Salisbury selling property at heavily discounted rates to developers, and I don't support the city's ongoing mismanagement of funds.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Next up is Robert Taylor.
For once, I don't go first. I don't live in Newtown, but I do live in Salisbury, and I'd be interested if anyone can beat me on time here. In the adjourn, I'll go up in the hall. If anybody's been here longer than 50 years, let me know. If not, I beat you. So having said that, let me say a couple of other things that I didn't come tonight to say. First, regarding Chief Duncan, I would say Bravo Zulu. That's Navy Lingo for well-done. At least it was when I got out of the fleet, which was almost 65 years ago. And she has done an excellent job, no question about it. The, a couple of other things, one of the speakers tonight said that Governor Jackson was the only governor of Maryland from the eastern shore. As I recall, my memory may be foggy, I think Harry Hughes was originally from, I think, Caroline County, if I'm not mistaken, Denton, at least for part of his time. I know when he was governor, he had a beach house. I know when he was governor, he had a beach house over in Bethany, that doesn't count. But the main thing I came to talk about tonight is to congratulate you on the, what would be the fifth tax increase in the last 11 years. We're now up, over this 11-year period, 26% in the tax rate. That doesn't include, of course, the assessment increases that have occurred, which probably would be roughly, I'm guessing now, another 25 or maybe 30% over that period of time. So the long and short of it is, the property tax revenue has gone up significantly for both of those reasons. And yet, we still need more money, it seems. And the reason for that is because we haven't, it's been expressed tonight, in fact, it's hard to follow all of the speakers tonight. There's been a lot of truth said to power tonight, including the folks from Newtown. I don't live there, but I appreciate their problems. And what we're going to see, if we don't change course, is we're going to see more of it. What we're going to see is a headline just like this one from today's newspaper. Property Tax Hike on Table Tonight. We'll be here roughly a year from now. You can almost bet the farm on it, doing the same thing, because of inflation, because of the way the city spends money, and because of the fact that a year from now, I'm assuming that Ross will have its certificate of occupancy. It'll go on the tax rolls, I assume, on the first of next year, that they go on every six months when they come on with COs. And they won't be paying taxes. And if you do this hotel project that was mentioned and give them the Horizon, and you do the apartments down on the lot in back of the plaza and give them the Horizon, it's going to be more of the same. And as I said a week ago, frankly, that would be obscene when you're taxing the rest of us five tax increases in 11 years, and next year it'll be six in 12 years. That'll be one tax increase every two years, on average. And it'll be probably by that time, it's 26%, what you did tonight over 11 years. It'll be probably 30 to 35%, roughly a third, over 12 years. And that is one humongous tax rate increase. And bear in mind, we're double taxed because of the county, so. So anyway, I think that, I would ask a couple questions. I'll be glad to yield the floor to the mayor. A week ago, I asked, what's the story on the money for this fire and EMS service from the county? The revised budget is 1.9 million 964,000. The county council's budget that they adopted last week is a million. Where's, where's the difference coming from? I mean, is it going to be pennies from heaven? Or what? And so I'd be glad to yield the floor if anybody wants to answer that question.
You've already gone over four minutes, so.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but I mean, you know, sometimes I, you have to go a little long, I think. And the other question I would have, just to make sure, is that the police are getting the raise that I think they're getting, which would make them comparable on starting salary to what the county deputies are going to, which is 55,000. As I read the revised budget, that's true, but I'd like to see that confirmed. So anyway, that wraps it up, and I do want to add just one thing if I can. You could tonight do away with the Horizon program. If you look at the city ordinance, Section 3, .25, .010, Subpart F, and I quote, "The city council may approve modifications to the Horizon program and suspend or terminate the continuance of the Horizon program at any time by resolution of the city council." You could continue the meeting tonight and do that. Now, I understand that would be very unusual, but how about doing it at your next legislative meeting? Let's kill that thing right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Is there, is there an online, is somebody on Zoom?
Lynn, if you're still there.
Hello?
Hi, Lynn.
Hey.
Sorry you missed me in the room, but I'm here anyway. Lynn Bratton. I live on South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. I'm thankful that I think you have gotten some answers to some of the questions about the light at South Boulevard. My question is still, however, that our gentleman admitted that the controller is still working, because I saw the Rommel Company down there this week, last week, looking at things. That light was still functional when it was decommissioned, and if the controller is working, then it should be able to go back into service. I understand that there are no more lights in the city of Salisbury or locally sourced, but those, those instruments do still exist in other places, and I'm sure that an extensive search could be done and find, they could source out used parts if light bulbs are still needed. The other piece that I don't understand is, if there are 12 bulbs that need to be functional, kind sir, you said you didn't know whether they were working or not. I would task you to find out if they're working, and if they're working, it needs to be turned back on, please. It is still an unsafe intersection. I'm seeing people blow through it. They tag behind each other, follow the leader, not one turn after the other, so it's still unsafe. I'd like to commend our retiring city office, police officer chief, I don't think she's still in the room, but my goodness, what a breath of fresh air she has been to the city of Salisbury, and she will be missed and big shoes to fill. I also want to echo the concerns of multifamily homes and over occupancy in neighborhoods. It's not just a function of Newtown, it's happening everywhere. The Newtown folks have given you some very specific examples with good, good backup information that needs to be acted upon. And lastly, I too am feeling the disadvantage of the indiscriminate tax break given to those who are also renting to the same population of people that I tend to rent to, and that would be some of the students that go to Salisbury University and elsewhere. And because they don't have to pay taxes and I do, then that causes their rents not to have to be as high, perhaps, and we're all competing for the same population, and it's an unfair advantage. That's it from me. I will see you in two weeks, hopefully, and I hope everybody has a good evening.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Last public comment is Holly Worthington.
My name is Holly Worthington. I'm a landlord, I'm a property owner, and I'm a downtown business owner. I own Worthington Realty Group, which is in the old synagogue building. Across from our lot is Lot 15, which we've now been told that is going from permitted parking to hourly parking, and then the hourly parking is being proposed to be raised. I have tenants who have lived in this building prior to me purchasing it, one of which is an older lady. First of all, I do know they do have a fixed income. I also know that her having to pay an hourly rate to be able to park where she resides is ridiculous. I also think it's ridiculous that if she, we end up having to move out of this lot, that she would have to unload groceries and carry them for several blocks to be able to get to her apartment. In addition to the fact that I have currently seven agents that work for me, this is our employment, so we all had permits, and now we're being told it's our lot, which is right across from our office, is going to be hourly. So my proposition is, I want to ask, I've done a little bit of research, I noticed that the Lot 15, which is at the intersection of Camden Street and Market Street, is listed by an out-of-town brokerage. And when I did some research to see if it was still available, of course, it's not on our local MLS, so you cannot find the details on our local MLS. However, going onto the website for this company that has it listed, when you go to search the price, it says "Price undisclosed." It also says "Tax and Fee Incentive Programs for Developers and Qualified Projects," "Hotel or Residential Incentive Zone," Horizon, Ordinance 2669. "Waiver of Comprehensive Connection Charges," Ordinance Number 2611. It's in an enterprise zone, which is real property, offers real property credit, Art and Entertainment, District Property Tax Incentive and Opportunities in Program. My question is, if we have the Opportunity Shop, which is a nonprofit, the money goes to Asbury, they also use this lot, so these are people coming to a thrift store to buy inexpensive items that are going to benefit the Opportunity Shop. My proposition would be, is there, is there still the ability to purchase this lot? Because I would like to do so. I would like to know if there is a way to find out what this quote-unquote "undisclosed" amount is, that it's being offered for sale. I'd also like to know, do you have a current signed offer, because the S-STAT records indicate that it is still owned by the city of Salisbury? About a month ago, I received a letter saying that there was a projected project to go onto this. Is that project going to convey with title? Is that something that, once it's purchased, the project gets approved? Because that project bothers me in the fact that I have a synagogue building built in 1896. It has a historical easement and a lot of historical significance. They're proposing building apartments that have partially vinyl siding. Doesn't go with the downtown vibe at all, doesn't go with the aesthetics of my building. I feel it would definitely, having that across from my building, it doesn't even match. Anyway, I've contacted, I am a broker and also a licensed agent, but I've contacted a commercial agent, and he's going to assist me in writing an offer if there's the capability to do so. We've called that agent multiple times and have not gotten called back in regards to the ability to purchase. Is this something that the city puts into newsprint for us to be able to know when it goes for sale, if it's being offered at a certain rate? Why was it not put out to local companies to list? Was this so that we could not access this information quickly? Anyway, I'm 100% in agreeance with James Littlefield and the Adams Housing people, and I do hope that if there is the ability to purchase, that maybe I can get it at a 95% discount as well. Anyway, I have a line of credit, I'm happy to make an offer if y'all let me know how to do so.
Thank you.
And I mean it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll go to administration comments.
Poo, where to begin? A lot was said this evening. I wish people were here in the months prior when all of these decisions were made and discussed publicly. For example, Lot 15 was publicly put up through an RFP and sold to a company, so that opportunity is no longer on the table. The people who had the permits on Lot 15 have been relocated to Lot 1, an extra 20 feet across the street. That's just in reference to the last comments that were made. But switching focuses to this upcoming weekend, we do have the Juneteenth Parade downtown. We're really excited to host that in our downtown area. That is starting at 1:00. Other council people may speak more on to that subject. And I just want to say I do appreciate you moving forward with the budget as amended, and we're looking forward to that opportunities. That has definitely helped us move and retain and recruit talent in our public safety sectors and in our general government area. So thank you for making those decisions. Mayor?
Yeah, Juneteenth was on my list, so I'll skip that. We do have another person I'd like to thank who is retiring, and that's Leonora Dillon from the zoo, and she's done a good job, and we, she will be missed, and I know, I know the animals will miss her for sure. She was very involved. Also, I'd like to all point out, as I always do, that if you're capable of giving blood, please do so. And I'll let Angela tell you about how, what one pint of blood can, can do for people. Other than that, let me just check. I think that's it. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and speaking. We appreciate it. Mrs. Gregory?
I just want to thank my Newtown folks for coming out. It's always good to see y'all, good to hear from you guys. I know that Valerie had emailed before, and we had discussed this and talked about it. Ron Strickler had given us a lot of good info, so I don't know if you managed to pass that on, but yeah, so, you know, keep the city posted. If you, you know, see anything, you know the avenues to take to, to, to report things. And if folks don't know, if you see something that you think needs addressing, The Citizen Reporter is great. It's, it's a fantastic tool on the city website. If you have, if you have something that you want the city to address, whether it's a streetlight that's out, or something as serious as code violations, you know, anything like that, The Citizen Reporter is oftentimes the fastest way to get that information to the people who need it. It goes right to the people who, who would be dealing with that particular issue, so I strongly suggest folks utilize that. Other than that, they mentioned Juneteenth, so I'm just going to mention Pride the following weekend. I'm looking forward to it. We're going to have a good time. It's going to be a lot of fun. And that's about it for me.
Ms. Jackson?
Again, so glad to see you all come out and speak about your concerns. Nothing better than to hear, and you know, even though sometimes it's like kind of hard for us, when we hear your concerns, it is, it hits us hard. It really does. But my thing is, and I'll say it a million times, we should come to the communities that we're doing absolutely the work in. We should come to those communities and speak to the people. I heard the young lady, I don't know if she's still here, that came up last. When she said the lady with the parking lot issue, and she's handicapped, and she's got to bring her groceries from one end of the town to another to get to her apartment, because there may not be access for her parking, or she has to pay for parking, that's a concern for me as well. These are things that we need to communicate very well with, with our constituents, because I don't want to see a senior citizen or elderly person having to walk a million miles away just to get to and fro. They should have accessibility. And the transparency that we have, I can bet you, this year and then following years after, there will be more transparency. If I have to keep saying the same thing over and over and over again, we need transparency. People need to know, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and we need you all to come to the meetings, just like you have come, because I'm going to tell you something. You've touched my heart. Each time you've come, you've touched my heart in a way that, you know, the concerns. You are who put us here. You are the ones who put us in our seats. So we must be concerned about your concerns. And I thank you for coming, and Juneteenth will be Saturday, the parade is Saturday, and I'm elated because I am an ancestor or one of the children of the ancestry of a slave. And I just want everybody to come out and enjoy themselves and see the history of Juneteenth, because there is a lot of history behind it. There's so, so much history. I mean, I'm in the parade, I think Jack's in the parade, Megan's in the parade. Come out and enjoy yourselves. I'm quite sure you will enjoy yourself, because I know last, well, the last year they had it, it was wonderful. And I was met between two different Juneteens, one at the Billie Jean Jackson Park and one downtown, and I'm moving back and forth, but this year it's only one. So come out and enjoy yourselves. Have fun and learn the history. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
Thanks for, for coming out and, and sharing some stuff with us. And a lot of times, we don't know
And a lot of times, we don't know about these things unless you come and share them with us, and it's very important that you do. I do listen, what we all do, I do, we all listen very closely and hear what the needs are. A couple, additionally, I'd like to thank, again, Chief Duncan for her service to the city of Salisbury. And I know I've worked with her in several projects with the youth, and it's been fantastic and phenomenal. The community policing, and of course, I'm very fond of the co-responder model, people with mental illness. So, that's been very dear to my heart. I want to reiterate, the report and issue is, it's on the city's webpage, and I did hear people from Newtown who've used that. That is a good way to report it and also have it tracked. And I want to have everybody make sure they know how to use that. Summertime is here. I like to have everyone just think about driving safely, slow down. There are bike riders out there, there's children at play. We'll see that now, the school's going to be out here soon, children will be at play. And please, I don't know how many times I see this, but get out of the way, slow down, or stay still when an emergency vehicle is coming down the road. It's that simple. I would like to, and I've said this, I think, at the last session, I'm going to say it at this session, turn the light back on at South Boulevard and Camden. I think that's the safest bid for that in regards to the particular uniqueness with that intersection and the brick wall and the shrubbery there. That's all I'd like to advocate for that. I would like to also have, say publicly, our workshops coming up, I would like us to discuss more about the Horizon program in detail, reminding people what that is, and us having an open discussion about scaling that back, minimizing or discontinuing it. I would like to also put on the agenda the bird, my constituents, particularly an elderly population with these bird scooters. I would like to know how much money that they actually are bringing in and looking at the possibility of maybe discontinuing that. And a question that has come up, and my constituents have been calling me all week, especially when the county council did pass their budget, it did look like just a million dollars, was allocated for a fire service agreement, and we may have a different understanding to that. So, I want us to discuss that clearly and see how that works and how all that's fitting together and how that meets the city's needs. Again, thank you for coming out and sharing your concerns.
Thank you, Angela. Ms. Allen?
This has been a very interesting few months, so I have officially wrapped up my first budget session. And I think I've had the unique position to be in, to come in a point and halfway through, you know, you all have come in with many years of experience, and it's given me some different perspectives on the way that we have operated previously. I want to reiterate, this year's budget needed to be passed. There are things that needed to happen, and I fully support the work that went behind from our city administration to make that budget work. However, I want to reiterate that I don't want to set a precedence that the, as we see increase in costs, increase in supply chain demands, that these costs are not being put back on the backs of our residents. I don't want to set that precedent. Something that was reiterated, and I've looked into, you know, historically, we have raised those taxes incrementally. I have the numbers right here, you know, from 2017, 2018, 2021, and 2022, we've raised our water and sewer rates. And, you know, we need to find other ways to be able to afford the costs of what we need to keep the city running. We need to dive in, as you've mentioned, Councilman Blake, in the past, dig a little deeper and find out what else we can do before that becomes, that shouldn't be the first choice. And not assuming that it was, but I really want us to emphasize, moving forward, making sure that we are making decisions that are for the betterment of our entire population and not just a specific group. So, those are my thoughts for today.
I will, on the water sewer rates, I will point out that in 2010, 2011, against the advice of various people at the time, the water sewer rates were reduced 15%. And that led up, by the time we got on the council, water and sewer was in the red. And had we not taken those measures now, we would be in much, much more serious situation. And this year, this past year, we had one of our scientists who found a way to reduce the use of chemicals in the water and sewer, which helped us reduce a significant amount of costs. And, you know, water and sewer is infrastructure. If you figure you have to go and replace something, anytime you dig up and you've got to replace everything else, you're looking sometimes projects that can quickly become $2 million. Infrastructure is not cheap, and it's one of the things that I've seen when I served President of the Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities. Many small towns neglected to maintain the actual rates that they should have charged their residents over the years, and many towns are in serious, critical situations. If you had noticed, a couple years ago, Pittsville was one of those towns. They had sand in their water because they had failed to maintain their water lines. Many towns up and down throughout the state are in that situation because they neglected to charge what they should to maintain the system. So, with water and sewer rates, that's part of the reason we don't ever want to get to that position, because clean water is the standard of modern society. We don't live in the 1800s anymore, we live in the 2000s. With that, I have nothing else, and everyone have a good evening. We're adjourned.